Hey, good evening. Welcome. We'll call the meeting to order. This is the Marion City Council Meeting for Thursday, August 5th, 2021. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Mr. Harper?
Here.
Mr. Jensen?
Here.
Ms. Atkins?
Here.
Mayor Abu Osley?
Here.
Mr. Brandt?
Here.
Ms. Kedalia? Mr. Sterne?
Here.
Thank you. At this time, we have a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, first on our agenda this evening, we have a proclamation, which is related to the derecho, which will be the one-year anniversary of the derecho will be observed in Marion on August 10. And so I'll be making a proclamation for the commemoration of the derecho, and I'll read it this evening. Whereas on Monday, August 10, 2020, the city of Marion and surrounding communities experienced a severe weather event known as a derecho, with heavy thunderstorms and wind speeds up to 140 miles per hour that caused widespread power outages and damage to homes, businesses, trees, and power lines, making it one of the most costly thunderstorms in U.S. history. And whereas a great majority of structures in Marion sustained some physical damage, and at least 225 structures were destroyed or sustained major damage. And whereas nearly 41 and a half percent of trees on public property were lost, and many more trees on private property were destroyed. And whereas city and community leaders quickly organized a massive disaster response, including debris removal, humanitarian aid, and immediate response to those in need of assistance. And whereas Marion residents, with the help of volunteers from across the nation generously donated time, food, supplies, money, services, and compassion to help thousands of families in need despite some having damage to their own property. And whereas community leaders and volunteers logged over 1,100 hours at the emergency distribution center. And Marion's derecho recovery fund generated over $70,000, which provided grants to dozens of residents and business owners for help with the costs of repairs. And whereas approximately 1.2 million cubic yards of tree debris was removed from Marion, and approximately 10,000 cubic yards of construction and demolition debris was collected. And whereas in partnership with Monarch Research Project and Trees Forever, the city of Marion distributed over 1,200 trees to Marion and Link County residents, and planted over 375 trees on public land throughout the community within nine months of the disaster. And whereas the success of Marion's response to and recovery from the 2020 derecho is rooted in the exemplary community spirit, cooperation and concern for the well-being of people exhibited by our city team, businesses, and community leaders and residents. And whereas as our community continues to recover from the 2020 derecho, it is fitting to remember the impact of this historic disaster, reflect on our progress in the past year, and recognize our community's resilience and unity in the face of adversity. Now therefore, I Nicholas Abu Osley, Mayor of the city of Marion, Iowa, to hereby proclaim August 10, 2021, as a day to remember the 2020 derecho and its impact on our city. Express our gratitude to all who played a role in Marion's response and recovery efforts in the year since the storm, and celebrate the power of community that binds us together. Okay. Next, we have your next chief. Okay, some appointments and promotions with the fire department. We have Chief Crable. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. On March 13, 2020, our normal way of life began taking a big turn. COVID entered our lives. And so much had to be changed, and so much had to be canceled. Especially those big events in our lives that mean so much to us and that bring us joy. There were graduations, weddings, birthday parties, all canceled. In the fire service, acknowledgement of becoming a firefighter, of being promoted as an officer, had little or no fanfare during this past year with COVID. Some very important accomplishments were achieved that could not be celebrated appropriately with family, friends, coworkers, and our community. So tonight, we change all that and acknowledge the accomplishments of those that, of those accomplishments that were during the pandemic. So tonight, I have some members of the Marion Fire Department I want to publicly recognize, who during this past year have made major accomplishments and/or promotions that they, their families, and the residents of Marion can all be very proud of. So first, I would like to recognize firefighter/paramedic Pacer Langus. You want to come forward, Pacer? Pacer began his career with the Marion Fire Department as a probationary firefighter/emergency medical technician in January of 2020. Pacer is a graduate of Alvernet High School and has an associate degree in liberal arts from Kirkwood Community College. Before coming here, he was in marketing at Kettleson RV and was a volunteer firefighter for the city of Hiawatha. During his first year on the department, he became a certified paramedic and met all of the qualifications necessary to become a full-time firefighter/paramedic for the city of Marion in January of 2021. So tonight, I want Pacer to be awarded the honor of becoming a Marion firefighter. And tonight, his mother Kathy will be applying his badge of honor. First, you're swearing in.
You want me to do these two or all three of you? You're really like scoot the back in there. There's too much distance. I feel like Chief Crable should jump in there, too.
During 2020, the Marion Fire Department needed to change the organizational hierarchy to a command structure which would meet the needs and better serve the community with the administration of three fire stations. So in this change, the position of battalion chief was implemented. The Marion Fire Department now has four battalion chiefs. One is the department's training officer, and the other three are shift commanders. I would like the four of them to please come forward. And I'll tell a little bit about each one. Oh, this is payback. Oh, no. Okay, you're in out of order. I'll just go out of order. Battalion Chief Cameron Ford. Cam entered the department in February of 2002. Within his first year, he became a paramedic. He served as a volunteer, he served as a volunteer firefighter for the city of Marion for four years prior to coming on his full-time. He received his fire science certificate from Kirkwood in 2001. He also presently serves on the Alvernet Fire Department. And his wife Melissa will be pinning his badge. Next, we have Battalion Chief Kale McBurney. He's our department's training officer. Kale came on the department as a firefighter/emergency medical technician in February of 2002. He had served on the Monroe Township Fire Department since 1994 and has remained on both departments and presently is serving as the fire chief for Monroe Township. In 2003, Kale received his paramedic certification. And in 2018, he obtained his associate degree in fire science. Tonight, his father Larry, former fire chief of Monroe Township, will be pinning his badge. Next, we have Battalion Chief Jim O'Brien, who joined the department in October of 2000 as a firefighter/paramedic. He had been a volunteer for the Hiawatha Fire Department for six years prior and was employed by Area Ambulance Service before coming on to Marion Fire Department. In 2011, he received his associate degree in paramedicine. Jim's wife Lynn will be pinning his badge. Next, his battalion chief, Peter Lammer. Pete was hired as a firefighter/paramedic in January of 2003. He served in the U.S. Navy as a fireman apprentice on the USS Truxton. In 2017, he received his associate degree in fire science. Pete's badge will be pinned on by the chief of the Marion Fire Department. So all those pinning, if you would please come forward. Oh, yes, we should do the oath first, sorry. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, wait here, Mayor. If you have to me. I consider it as to tell you, Chief of the Marion Fire Department of Marion, Iowa. I'm Chief of the Marion Fire Department of Marion, Iowa. Further than I will support, further than I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States, Constitution of the State of Iowa, constitution of the State of Iowa. And the ordinances of the city of Marion. And the ordinances of the city of Marion. I will serve the city of Marion. I will serve the city of Marion and its fire department and its fire department. With that's my ability, with that's my ability. With honor and respect, with honor and respect. And an adherence to the ethics of the fire service. Adherence to the ethics of the fire service. These things I saw on the
It's not John.
Anything else, Chief? Okay, well, congratulations to all of you again, and it's wonderful that we were able to do these recognitions in person once again and to celebrate these milestone moments. And I really, it's really great to see all the members of the fire department here supporting their teammates. It says a lot, so good to see all of you. Thank you. Okay. Moving on with the agenda. At this time, we have a public forum, which is a time set aside on the agenda for comments from members of the public on any topic that is listed on the agenda but not associated with a public hearing. If anyone is here to address the council on any item that is not on the agenda, there is another section of the, of the agenda reserved for that. At this time, we'll take comments from the public on any item that is on the agenda but not associated with the public hearing. Anyone here to address the council? Yes, come on forward. Yes, so please say your name and address and speak into the microphone. Thank you.
My home address or business address? Does it matter?
Does it matter, Rachel?
Doesn't matter. Okay. I'm Stephanie Phillips. I'm the owner of Victory Sports Center and Victory Gymnastics Training Center. The sports center is what I'm here for, so that is 6240 North Gateway Drive in Marion, Iowa. So I just wanted to come in person tonight to ask you guys to please accept our deferral at this time for the sidewalk going in at the sports center. The reason being, at this time, it seems kind of pointless, a sidewalk to nowhere, as there are not businesses on either side of us. My own customers just use the sidewalk back and forth between my two buildings. At this point, 66% of the businesses out in our development do not have sidewalks yet. The USDA building and Quincy Recycling across the street from us take up that whole city block. They do not have sidewalks. The new plumbing facility, the place right past that that does the vending, they do not have sidewalks. I know one of the arguments was that the gas station now has a sidewalk with a bus stop. But I fully understand that, and we are willing to put in the sidewalks at the time that everyone puts them in at the corner of 62nd and Lanier, which is the way we come in every day. There is a bus stop as well. There's at least three to five people at all times standing there in the grass waiting for the bus because there's not sidewalks there yet either. So we are completely willing to put them in at the time when everyone in the park is. So if there's going to be something, a game plan established that within the next, you know, two to three years, everyone does, then of course, we will do our part and add them. But at this point, everybody has suffered the past year. We were forced to be closed for three months. Probably half of our students dropped because everybody was scared. We are just now starting to rebuild to the point where we're getting back to our pre-COVID numbers, which of course affects our finances. We had already started the new project, literally broke ground when we were forced to close. That then put everything back for construction, which is why we just opened June 1st, which then affected those finances. So at the moment, neither facility is in the financials place we didn't plan for putting in sidewalks. So that's why we would just ask at this time, like I said, we are fully aware that it will be a beautiful development once it's finally all finished, and it would make sense to have sidewalks. So we are all on board for it at that time. That's why we're just asking for the deferment at this point until there's a game plan for the entire area out there to have them. So thank you for your consideration, and we greatly appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, we'll move forward with the consent agenda. Mr. Jensen?
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as follows. This will include items A1 through G1, Resolutions 29756 through 29789. And we accept for item E2, Resolution 29764, which will be considered later.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda, which includes items A1 through G1, Resolutions 29756 through 29763, and 29765 through 29789. Discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved. Sir, did you have a question?
Do you have backup to the previous public comment?
Sure. Yeah. You have, you wanted to address council?
Yeah, I didn't get up there fast enough.
Oh, that's okay. That's fine. We can do that.
I submitted this question to Mr. Jensen.
Wait, sir, could you state your name and address for the record, please?
I'm Chuck Smiley, S-M-I-L-E-Y. 2735 Highland Circle. Marion, Iowa. 52302.
Okay.
So my question is that what is the Marion long-term city plan where Marion can remain a nice town it is today and not follow the dreaded downward spiral economic, so, social economic downturn of other American towns?
Okay, so
Some of my comments are that
Sir, is this an item that's on the agenda?
No.
Okay, so that, that would be, that would be at the end of the meeting. There is a, a public forum for that time. Would you mind saving your question for then?
Okay.
Okay, we'll come back to it. Okay. Thank you very much for, for understanding. Okay. All right. Proceeding with the next item on the agenda, which is the abstention calendar.
Mayor Protem, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abu Osley's abstention as follows. Items E1 through E7, which are resolutions 29790 through 29796, and also Resolution number 29764.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abu Osley's, Abu Osley's extension. Items E1 through E7, Resolutions 29790 through 29796, and Resolution 29764, item E2. Questions or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved with one abstention.
Good.
You're gonna make a motion to approve ordinance number 21-19, amending Chapter 99, Sections 99.02 and 99.04 of the Code of Ordinances relating to sewer service charges, connection fees. This is a final consideration.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the final consideration of ordinance number 21-19, amending Chapter 99, Sections 99.02 and .04 of the Code of Ordinances relating to sewer service charges and connection fees. Discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion is approved. This time, we have a public hearing on the Urban Renewal Plan Amendment for Collins Road Extension Urban Renewal Area. We'll open the public hearing and ask for a recap that gave. Or, I'm sorry, amount. Please proceed.
Your Honor, staff is recommending an amendment to the Collins Road Extension Urban Renewal Area Plan to include two infrastructure projects and one low-income housing project. This will provide the flexibility of using tax increment financing to support those projects. Infrastructure projects are needed to accommodate growth in that area, mainly commercial and industrial development. Housing project is needed. Community has an unidentified need for low-income housing.
Okay, is there anyone here to address the council either in favor or in opposition of this measure? Any members of the public to address the council on this item? Please come forward. And have we received any comments outside this meeting?
I have not.
Okay, then please note that for the public record. And we'll close the public hearing.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution number 29797, approving Collins Road Urban Renewal Plan Amendment.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution number 29797, approving the Collins Road Urban Renewal Plan Amendment. Discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve Merrill, Mayor Oral appointments to the Local Option Sales Tax Oversight Committee. This would be Ann Brenda's, 1145 Indian Creek Circle, Marion, term expiring on 123121. Forrest Ward of 2224th Street, Marion, term expiring on 123121. And Elizabeth Wilson, 1407 7th Street, Marion, term expires 123122.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the appointments to the Local Option Sales Tax Oversight Committee, Ann Brenda's and Forrest Ward for terms expiring on December 31, 2021, and Elizabeth Wilson for a term expiring December 31, 2022. Discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion's been approved.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution number 29798, amending contract with Frank's Tree Service regarding hazardous tree removals in the amount of $73,950.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution number 29798, amending the contract with Frank's Tree Service regarding hazardous tree removals in the amount of $73,950. Discussion? All those in favor of approving Resolution number 29798, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion's approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve Resolution number 29799, approving payment to Frank's Tree Service regarding hazardous tree removals in the amount of $73,950.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution number 29799, approving the payment to Frank's Tree Service for hazardous tree removals in the amount of $73,950. Discussion?
Yes, Your Honor.
Go ahead.
Just a question. Just wanted to confirm with Seth. Is this FEMA reimbursable?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Thanks for the long walk for a yes answer.
Okay, any further questions or comments? Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving Resolution number 29799, please say aye. Okay, all those in favor of approving Resolution number 29799, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion's approved.
Mayor, I make a motion to receive, file and refer to tax petition regarding installation of stop signs at the intersection of 12th Street and F Avenue, Jamie Bussie, 1215th F Avenue.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to receive, file and refer to the Traffic Advisory Committee a petition regarding installation of stop signs at the intersection of 12th Street and F Avenue. Discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion's approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve Resolution number 29800, approving agreement 2022-6-005 with the Iowa Department of Transportation regarding Interstate 380 and Tower Terrace Road interchange. Second.
It's been moved by Mayor Protem Atkins, seconded by Councilmember Jensen to approve Resolution number 29800, approving the agreement 2022-6-005 with the Iowa Department of Transportation regarding Interstate 380 Towers Terrace Road interchange. Just a reminder, this is the agreement regarding Marion's contribution to the interchange. Discussion? Okay, all those in favor of Resolution number 29800, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 21-20, amending Chapter 176.06, Rules and Definitions of the Marion Code of Ordinances. This will be the final consideration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution number 21-20, amending Chapter 176.06 of the Marion Code of Ordinances. This is the final consideration. Discussion? Okay, all those in favor of ordinance number 21-20? Final approval, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved. This time we have a public hearing regarding a request for approval of a preliminary and final site development plan for Smoothie King at the northwest corner of 62nd Street and Carlson Way. Public hearing is now open and we'll have presentation recap. That's Dave. Okay.
Yes, this is a request for approval of both a preliminary and final site development plan. Kind of presenting them at the same time because they are identical in nature. Smoothie King is looking at going out at the East Town Crossing Development, highlighted there on the red on the screen. It's a rather small building that will primarily smoothies and some other nutritional type of items are available. Provided a little bit of information about Smoothie King and the staff report. The plan is only commissioned met last month and reviewed the Smoothie King proposal, including the building elevations. They were overwhelmingly supportive of the posed elevations as well as all the aspects of the development. Their biggest concern, staff's biggest concern at the time was the, the drive-through facility. They were providing stacking for about six cars. Staff's concern was it would creep onto 62nd Street and we'd see some of the problems we've seen at other drive-through facilities in the metro area. The developer has resubmitted and it's a little hard to see on the rendering here, but he has resubmitted revised drive-through plans that direct traffic will feed the drive-through from the west rather than the east. It's kind of hard to see, but there are some cars shattered in there. I only, I had this crop to show it. Tried to make it a little bit bigger, but this provided stacking for, I believe it was 30 cars. So there's, there's about 20 more cars not shown on the image here that could stack entirely off of the private street network and it'd be entirely internal to the development. And that was coming from Hennessy Way and then there's also an option to come from Carlson Way from the south. So there was, there was 30 plus cars that could stack again off of, off of, off of the public streets. And that was based on some comments, I think, that the developer had had with, heard the comments from the city council at the work session, the set date meeting a few weeks ago, and that was his option to, to correct the staff's concerns. The plan is only commissioned, they did recommend approval as it was originally submitted with the six or so cars stacking. They, they believe that solutions existed to correct it if it should be a problem and they didn't want to put the burden to correct it when it wasn't known if it was going to be a problem or not. But again, staff had some concerns that would be peak problems onto 62nd Street that runs north-south in that location. Is there another slide there, Terrell? Should have hit on this earlier, but again, the building elevations were all very contemporary, met all the design standards for the development. And we were recommending, we're recommending approval based on the planning and commission's recommendations. And again, with the drive-through being reoriented servicing from the west, it, it, it does meet our stacking concerns. People will probably still cheat in if there's no line though, they may cheat in 62nd Street. So there may be some education and some additional signage that might help educate drivers to, to go around the block or go around the development a little bit to, to feed in. But we're confident that the, some signage and some line striping, if it does become a problem, can, can help motivate the drivers to be, to feed into it as they should.
Okay, thank you. This time the public hearing is open. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the council on this topic, either in favor or in opposition? Please come forward, state your name and address.
Brian Ridge, 740 Casino Drive is our office in Hiwatha. I'm the developer of this and the franchise owner of this. And what we did, we listened to what they had concerns with stacking. We did move the drive-up window forward so we could get seven cars if they were stacking off of 62nd Street. And then we work with, Bobby will come up and explain our plan for implementation. If, if stacking is an issue, we'll block that drive and reroute the cars up to Hennessy or through Carlson Way back through our own property and that's where we'd be able to stack additional. At this time, I'll let Bobby come up and explain to you. He spent some time over in Des Moines Market getting a good understanding how many cars are actually stacking at a time and, and so he could talk through the operations of it. So you understand, you know, this is kind of a fast-paced, it's not slow. So you're not sitting in drive-throughs a long time. And the other thing everybody needs to remember, we do have inside seating. So Bobby will go through them numbers also. So this time I'll let Bobby speak to you guys.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bobby Singleton. My address is 6156 Carlson Way. Currently I am the COO of Bandlow Holdings, owner, owner operator of a restaurant, Italian restaurant down in Burlington, Iowa. I've been in this business 30 years and I do understand how operations do work. Spending some time down at these locations, I noticed that this is built for speed. The average car wait was three minutes, three minutes. The longest wait was 12 minutes because someone had ordered 12 smoothies. And yeah, through the, yeah, now, and that's a training issue because they should have parked that car and continued to keep the traffic moving gradually. So I, I understand the concern and I'm here to answer and address any concerns that you might have. And these were taken, the times were taken between 11:30 and 1:30, 25 cars per hour. So, and that's, that's fast, that's fast. They're moving them in and out. I don't see a it's a training issue. And it's about being proactive, knowing what's happening in the community, what's coming up, big events and, and preparation for that. The apartment buildings that are located in that area as well, we would provide to-go services and delivery services for them as well, so that they wouldn't have to filter down and, and congest the area as well. Just a couple of other side notes. Smoothie Kings represents health and nutrition. I'm new to this area, but I see that it is a, an athletic town. And I think we would be an asset to this community, providing healthy options and a fun environment and, uh, yeah, a really good time. So I thank you for your time and, uh, yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone have questions for him? Yeah, I think that this time we'll just take, if you have questions for, questions for Bobby. Otherwise we'll have our discussion with the motion.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. All right. Okay, anyone else here to address the council on this matter, either in favor or in opposition? Sir, you, you need to come to the microphone and state your name and address. Yep. But just state your name and address and ask your question.
So my name is Sean Keating. My address is 2664 Greenway Court, Marion. So my question is regards into the stacking. We said that initially when it was submitted, it was what, six cars up to 30 now? So, and stacking from the, from the west, I believe you said. So is that stacking on the west? Is that on an internal within the development? And so is that blocking any access points into any of the other developments as well as is it blocking access from, is that another building in the property next to that? On the right-hand side of that drawing or the left-hand side of the drawing? Is that a building?
It is.
So is that stacking lane going in front of that building? Is, is, is the 30 cars going in front of that building?
As you move, yeah, it's another building. Those are garage doors.
Okay, that was just.
Behind those buildings. I don't know how long it is off top of my head, but yeah, it'd be blocking those, those garage doors.
I just didn't know if that was another retail establishment within the development or, okay. Okay, that was just my question when looking at the drawing.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else here to address the council on this topic, either in favor or in opposition? Hey, and Dave, have you received any comments outside this meeting?
None.
None?
None.
Okay, please note that for the record. Seeing that there's no one else coming forward, we'll close the public hearing.
Your Honor. Your Honor, I move to approve Resolution number 29801, approving the preliminary site development plan for Smoothie King located at the northwest corner of Carlson Way and 62nd Street, Marion, Iowa, Ridge Development LLC.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution number 29801, approving the preliminary site development plan for Smoothie King at the northwest corner of Carlson Way and 62nd Street. Discussion? Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, I think some information Mr. Ridge made available a few days ago when we met with him was your anticipated daily volume. And then what percentage of that would be drive-through? And what percentage of that would be walk-in or coming into the building?
Yeah.
So we, we had a eight-store average, three of them being in Des Moines, the rest of them in the Kansas City market. And that eight, out of them, each store, the average was 200 units a day, which was what they were going through. And of that, 45% of that is through the drive-through. 13% is online orders. So Grubhub coming in and picking it up in the lobby and the 42% is walk-in lobby sales. Yeah, I think that's important to know when we start talking about what is the expected drive-through volume. Sure. And then trying to picture that as to how busy that drive-through and what the queuing and stacking may look like. So I think that's just an important piece of information. Sure.
So. My question is, how do you guarantee, I mean, what's, what's the, what's the manner in which that you're, that you're going to have that stacking from the west? Like, how do you guarantee it's going to stack from that way?
So what we went through is, is the way that if you looked at the building elevations, the elevation to the south and to the east is all glass. And so if there's any stacking happening out there on 62nd Street, the manager can go out and will cone off that driveway to stop the stacking. And then we are going to implement signage on the west end of the building seat that's currently under construction for the Smoothie King. So we can try to route people there. We're also going to put signage up on Hennessy to bring them in that driveway there. So we'll have signage at both those. And then when we close that off, we'll have signage directing them to the other alternative entrances.
Yeah, I, I think something like that permanent signage, I think is important. Rather than relying on an individual, not that they won't do, do their job, you know, but just relying on, on somebody doing that, I don't think is.
Yeah. No, so we'll have permanent signing. As the development fills out, we'll, we'll have all the permanent signing, signage in place. And then it will have the directional signage internally that directs everybody where to go.
Other discussion, questions? Go ahead, Randy.
Yep, thank you. I, I had some concerns on that as well too, and I'm glad the mayor asked that specific question because we're seeing other places that we're relying on manual cones and manual operations. And it's just, again, it's going to be determined on their manpower and whether they just, you know, those cones are being moved for trucks to come in and then those cones don't go back up. So, I mean, I want to be realistic about signage and unless there's a permanent wall there, I'm not convinced that this is going to be in that order, though I appreciate it. Cause there's also going to be retailers frustrated with stacking to the west as being pointed out as well. The other concern I have, well, for this is going to be what future owners of this property will look like. If for some reason in two years this property is sold, we're going to be right back into the same boat again as to what new ownership will perceive that their rights are going to be and what they can do with that as well too. So I'm a little concerned about today and what it is for today. But at the end of the day, this building is only so many square feet. So its attraction to resale in the future will be to the same endeavor. And we're going to be stacked, or we're going to be concerned with stacking issues as well for that going forward is, is a lot of my concerns with this. We're seeing that the COVID, I appreciate the history of what, but every retailer right now has no track record of what sales are going to do and what predictions are because the, the places that we see, the inside seating as we're witnessing are going back to minimal 2-0 again in a lot of states. So we're going to be forced with drive-throughs. That is a new way of life for us for the foreseeable future here. I do understand retail, I've worked retail and I know what habits are. And so I, I still have a lot of concerns with this sitting on an adjacent road like this one is, but I just wanted to kind of share some of those concerns. I would entertain any comments that you might have to that.
So I can tell you for the next 10 years, it, it won't change because that's what our, our contract is with is for the 10 years with three, five-year extensions on that. So for the foreseeable future, it won't be changing hands or businesses there. As you talked about COVID and drive-through, since they eased the COVID restrictions, the drive-through on the eighth that we talked about has dropped, their drive-throughs have dropped 70% because they were 100% drive-through at that time. So, so they, they're back to their pre-COVID numbers and they're seeing that stay the same. And that was accurate up through yesterday.
Thank you. Okay. Just a comment then, and actually two comments. First off, Mr. Ridge, I appreciate your outreach to me with additional explanation around your plans and approach to this. As I think I mentioned to you, I viewed this as a successful contemplation of a mitigation plan should it become a problem. And I hope you expressed sensitivity to the concern that we had as, as council members. And I really appreciate the comment that Mr. Singleton, is it? Made about that this is a training issue for staff. Again, that's a proactive measure that will help mitigate the overall concern that we, that we have. I think the big takeaway for me, and I commented on this at work session, I think the collective sensitivities that we've exposed by virtue of another commercial entity in town, coupled with the advanced or extended discussion that we've had for this, I hope that Dave and, and Tom, this gives you a framework by which in your very early analysis and contemplation relative to commercial entities with drive-up services, that you can have an expanded dialogue before it even comes before council and all of it's kind of taken out of the wash. And that mitigates then our concern in a more formal manner. So I think these are good inputs for design considerations in the very early phases of development projects. Thank you.
Any other discussion among the council, questions? Comments? Thanks, Mr. Any other comments? Any other comments? Okay, then we'll proceed with the vote. All those in favor of approving resolution number two nine eight zero one, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, please say no.
No.
Okay, so we have one no and one abstention by the mayor Protem. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number two nine eight zero two approving the final site development plan for Smoothie King located at the northwest corner of Carlson Way and sixty second Street, Marion, Iowa. This is brought by Ridge Development LLC.
Second. Been moved in second to approve resolution number two nine eight zero two approving the final site development plan for Smoothie King at the northwest corner of Carlson Way and sixty second Street. Discussion. Okay, all those in favor of resolution number two nine eight zero two, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
No.
Okay, so we have again one no and one abstention by the mayor Protem. The motion is approved.
And I move to approve resolution number two nine eight zero three approving a deferral of sidewalk installation located at sixty two forty North Gateway Drive, Marion, Iowa. Eric Phillips Victory Sports Center.
Second.
Been moved in second to approve resolution number two nine eight zero three approving the deferral of sidewalk installation at sixty two forty North Gateway Drive. Discussion.
Your honor.
Yes, sir.
Just just a comment on this. I, as I think we covered in our work session, one of the important features for this entire area, at least as I viewed it, was to define a sidewalk plan that is made available to all commercial entities that are occupying that space so that they understand at such time, we need to build that out, what's going to be required. I'd hate to do that piece by piece, as I think has been suggested by the earlier commentator. And I would just like to see a plan drawn up and shared with the businesses. And then that way they know what they have to have to perform to relative to the date that we say, let's put in sidewalks. Thank you.
Other discussion? So for for the staff, is there a plan or something in place that's coming down soon in terms of putting a plan together for sidewalks? I know you've expressed the importance of having the sidewalks at this time when they may not have been what for whatever reason they weren't, the furls were given previously. But to me, to me, the argument that, you know, it hasn't been done, so we don't have to, I think, doesn't really is not very convincing. You know, we've we have, as council member Goodell noted on Tuesday, we, you know, we have asked other facilities to put put in sidewalk where there's no one on either side because we're trying to establish a new standard. And we're trying to make sure these things are done. You know, as a matter of routine so that we don't end up with pockets without sidewalks and then we have to go back and ask people to put them in later. So is there is there a plan that you're working on to install sidewalks in this entire area?
No, as of right now, no. But for the comments at Tuesday's meeting, that's something Nicole and I sat down and talked briefly about. We need to we need to have that meeting with Tom and that's something we could sure bring back. I think it's important to establish the sidewalks out here, right, wrong, or indifferent what happened in the past. It's it's developments filling up rapidly and some commercial activity. And I'm gonna call it the first restaurant, Quick Star in that area. There are a lot of employees in there and they they deserved to get to a Quick Star or whatever restaurant in the future is up there safely and off the streets and away from some of the big traffic that's out there. So we'll we'll probably hear chat with Tom a little bit and and put a put a rough plan in place and try to bring back some suggestions to the council here at a future meeting sooner than later. Kind of identify what sidewalks could go in today just because they've already committed to them. There might be a few out there that we put we, when I say committed, we've when we pour driveways, engineering department makes them put the sidewalk into the driveway. So we'll have to tear out a driveway to save them some money, you know, doing it then. So we've got a lot of driveways that are already accommodating sidewalks and identify those and then take a side. Maybe it's one side, both sides will look at it and bring back some couple of options for the council to look at. And that's the direction we want to go. We can set up a schedule and say this is phase one, two, and three. And phase ones, a year, two year, whatever it may be, we can we can give some recommendations there and go forward. But again, sidewalks are required as part of code. So staff's going to try to be a little bit better at just requiring sidewalks every time. And you might see some more deferrals on other projects in the future. But I think we just need to, it might go to nowhere, but it's going to go somewhere someday and it's not going to get any cheaper than it is today.
Yeah, so I think a deferral should be a very rare circumstance, you know, that that's just going to cause extreme hardship or, you know, it's just a real extreme circumstance. I think, like you said, it's going to go somewhere someday and we have to start at some point and I guess that's the all that to say, yes, go ahead.
Yeah, again, I'm okay with the deferral. I mean, I've seen a map and I drove out there yesterday and drove through the entire area. And if I look at today, today, the importance of a sidewalk being in that area maybe isn't highly important. But again, I agree with Grant's comment and exactly what Dave outlined, that we need that plan put together. So I'd be okay for a deferral today, but not for a very long time. So I think based upon that plan, you're going to have, whether you face it, it phases one, two, and three, and those closest to areas that you anticipate are going to have more foot traffic are the first ones to be putting a sidewalk in, which is going to include this area right here. So I think it's going to be in the near term anyway. So I'm okay with a deferral today, but obviously needing that plan as you described in the very near future so that everybody does know what's expected.
Yeah, thank you, your honor. Just a footnote to my prior comment. Let's assume for just the moment that this entire area was was only in the concept phase. I think it's at that point that a sidewalk plan should be developed. And the minute anybody starts active development in the area, they're given, they're given that plan with the expectation that as they build, the sidewalk goes in in parallel. So that what we don't do is create a situation where we have a a large area without sidewalks. So with the plan being defined upfront with the development, that then just causes it to be incrementally built out as as entities occupy the various lots. So make it early, not sort of as after the fact that we're we're now in that situation. That'd be my recommendation.
Randy?
Thank you. I have a couple of points on this. I have had the opportunity to visit with an employee that works out at legacy manufacturing. And and I'm, it is frustrating to listen to them who are out there with public transportation and trying to get to that final destination. And so in the winter time, when, you know, they're forced to walk on the road and then they're given that opportunity to move over to the sidewalk and then they're back into the road again. I do share those frustrations with them and I I'm on a very short leash on these exceptions being moved out here where these are not being handled. And I I wonder as as point two to this comment, if it would warrant us to put a timeline of one year on this so that it does at least come back before council, if it is approved, that it's it's again readdressed. I just feel like things are being put off and it's years and years and years and years where if we putting start putting some timetables on some of these things, then it's going to come back before council again to be reviewed. We know the public transportation is going to get more busy out there. These bus stops are going to get more populated and there's there's a final destination for these people. And I think, you know, we got a public facility out there, the PD, and we don't even have a sidewalk to get to it. So that's a that's a concern for me. Thank you.
Okay, so are you saying you would?
I guess I'm just opening up for a little conversation as to whether or not.
Well, I guess.
We feel.
I'm willing to go along with a deferral, knowing that it's not indefinite. And if there's a either a plan coming or if it's for a limited time period, I that's more amenable to me personally. But just an indefinite deferral, I don't I don't think really. Yes.
I was just reminded, at any point in time, though, these are final planted lots and within the development agreement, the memorandum of agreement, which council approves and the original developer signs off on, that at any point in time, it could be you could defer it today, tomorrow, you can pass a resolution in necessity requiring the sidewalk to be installed at a hundred percent the owner's cost. And that goes from these owners to the next, to the next, to next. So there's always an opportunity if if a situation changes out there in the next few months. We can just go back and say, got to put it in. And that can be set on a timetable the council's choosing from thirty days to six months. So you always have that tool in your back pocket to use if the situation changes at any time.
Yeah, well, that's important. So thanks for saying that. That is that is important. So where we sit today with the idea, and I think it's a commitment, a plan gets drawn up for the sidewalks in that area. I will be okay for the deferral at this point as requested. But then what we should do is think holistically about the occupants of this area. Not the right phrasing. And then decide that we are going to request at a future date that there then a time clock starts, let's say, a year or eighteen months to get all the sidewalks in that are appropriate for the area at that point in time. So that way we mitigate the situation we're in in total there. But with the proviso, as I said, I'm in favor of the deferral for right now pending those subsequent actions.
Okay, other discussion? Anyone? Okay. Ready to vote? Okay, all those in favor of approving resolution number two nine eight zero three, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Okay, the motion is approved. For the next two items, I will turn over the meeting to mayor Protem.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve resolution number two nine eight zero four approving plat of survey number two two five zero for property located east of Winslow Road and south of Royal Oak Ridge Road, Marion, Iowa, Hunter's Ridge Development Company, L C.
Second.
Been moved in second into approve resolution number two nine eight zero four approving plat of survey number two two five zero for property located east of Winslow Road and south of Royal Oak Ridge Road, Marion, Iowa, Hunter's Ridge Development Company, L C. Discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Resolution. Resolution has been approved.
I can do the next one. Mayor Protem, I move to approve resolution number two nine eight zero five approving scope of service and contract amendment number two with AIA, a document B one zero five with RDG planning and design regarding land use planning for the northwest corner of Highway thirteen and Highway one hundred Holloway property in the amount of nineteen thousand seven hundred fifty dollars.
Second.
It's been moved in second into approve resolution number two nine eight zero five approving scope of services and contract amendment number two to AIA document B one zero five with RDG while planning and design regarding land use planning for the northwest corner of Highway thirteen and Highway one hundred Holloway property in the amount of nineteen thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those, all those opposed, please say no. Resolution has been approved. I'll pass it back to the mayor.
Okay, next we have a public hearing regarding an update to the official Marion zoning map for the property located within city council ward four, which includes the city's precincts eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen. Public hearing is now open and we'll take a recap or a presentation.
Yeah, I'll give a brief one here. This is the second of four wards that we're updating with the new zoning map. This the zoning map update reflects the new zoning regulations that were adopted by the council about a year and a half, two years ago now. Encompasses the four precincts. I'm not going to go through them all in. I'm not going to go through all the minor details, but majority of this district is ninety, ninety percent of it is school district. Blood plane park area or residential. Most of the residential is just really a name change. If you're single family today, R two, you'll be single family tomorrow, S R two or S R one or S R three, depending on the size of your lot. So we've created districts that reflect smaller lots, larger lots, estate sized lots for the counties. So majority of these updates are residential. Hit the highlights of each district real quick. Precinct eleven is the Hunter's Ridge, generally the Hunter's Ridge areas I described it. It's almost all residential with the golf course getting a a recreation open space, which allows the golf course to operate and also allows commercial activity associated typically with a golf resort or golf course, the clubhouse, restaurant, bar, pool, pro shop, whatever, the typical items you may see with a the golf course. It also incorporates a little bit of an area southeast of Indian Creek Road, which is an older part of the community. We're using the traditional zoning. I refer to as tier one through four. This accommodates our oldest neighborhoods, typically where we see smaller lots. And we see homes that may not meet the setbacks today. They might be too close because they have a front door or sorry, front porch to the street. They may have smaller side yard setbacks just because the homes were built closer to lot lines back in the back in those times. So this new traditional zoning allows those homes to possibly be rebuilt. It allows for new homes to be built in that area, but allows them to build sensitive to the neighborhood designs with the reduced setbacks instead of having to push it back twenty five feet, they can be at fifteen like everything else on the block. Moving on to Ward twelve, this is almost all again, single family homes. Taking in some of the older county subdivisions. So we've created the S R E, which is the estate. So it's going to allow for the large one acre lots out there and it kind of preserves those neighborhoods. They won't be able to subdivide those one acre lots without going through a rezoning process. And that, of course, opens it up to public comment, public hearing. So if somebody who does want to come in and carve a one acre lot, the two or three lots, the neighbors could sure show up and express their concerns about a rural estate look into a more suburban type development. Precinct thirteen, I'll skip over real quick and we'll go to precinct fourteen. And again, that's the same same as before. It's almost all single family, a few multifamily designations. It tries to create everything, it's everything conforming. And again, mostly name changes. Moving back to thirteen, this is the Tower Terrace Road area. Most of it is residential in this area. Again, some larger state one acre lots, former county subdivisions. I think the primary focus of this area has been the Tower Terrace Road corridor. As council knows, we've gone through a lot of changes over the years since it first got developed from twenty thirteen, well, before twenty two thousand eight to twenty thirteen, when major changes happened. Got a few minor tweaks to the ordinance since then. And here here we are today. It stays commercial. There's really no change in that respect, but some of the conditions that were approved back in twenty thirteen go away. Most of the uses are always going to be the same. You're more intense uses like a like a bar, which is less than fifty percent food, convenience stores and drive throughs are all reviewed under the conditional use process. Advantage to that again is it creates two public hearing opportunities of the finding zoning commission and the zoning board of adjustment. So if somebody's going to propose a convenience store along Tower Terrace, they have to bring everything in, just like the Smoothie King project did. Elevations, site plans, high detail plans. And the public will have two two opportunities to provide feedback on those projects in a public setting. And then they're decided by the zoning board of adjustment ultimately, based on their conformance with the plans and meeting the meeting the needs of of staff's requirements that maybe we may have. The other big change, none of the none of the other items like setbacks, building materials, that's all still there. The other big change is the elimination of hours of operation. As a few of us know, we sat through some long meetings on that when they first approached, first approved them. Right now it's twelve to six and then twelve AM to six AM closed and then one AM to six AM on the weekends, Friday, Saturday night, I believe. That's eliminated with a new B C district out there, Business Community District, don't have hours of operation. That's eliminated with a new B C district out there, business community district, don't have hours of operation. How do we address that is, again, we regulate the more intense commercial uses, convenience stores, restaurants, bars, drive throughs, they all get regulated. Not sorry, not restaurants, get regulated through a conditional use process. So a convenience store on the south side of Tower Terrace is probably a lot different than a convenience store on the north side of Tower Terrace by the Y M C A. In terms of distance from residential, road access, et cetera. So it allows us to review each project individually. A convenience store really wants to be on the south side of Tower Terrace Road, they're going to have to come in. And as part of that condition, it could be hours of operation will be regulated because you're within, your backyard backs up to a single family house. I don't see that happening, but that's, that's how we would regulate those uses and control hours of operation. By limiting hours of operation, you are putting some businesses at a disadvantage. Twenty four hour urgent care facility, emergency room, twenty four hour daycares are a thing that I've, I've seen coming, might be coming to Marion hopefully someday soon. Twenty four hour gym, that's a lot different than a bar, it's a lot different than a a convenience store. So why, we show, we're trying to avoid having to regulate everybody, you know, the same because of a few users and hurting the other businesses. So again, we can review all the, the most intense uses as a conditional use. The B C does include basically from Albernett all the way to Tenth Street along Tower Terrace Road, up Irish a little bit, not much. So that'll be the, again, it's very equivalent zoning, but the regulations that were adopted a couple of years ago. Those changes will occur if it's approved. We tried to minimize all of our, for the whole map, we've tried to minimize the number of nonconforming properties that we create because of zoning changes. We've done very well. Well, thank you, Terrell. There's really only two that are being created that I, that I find are probably being created. One is a Parlor City Drive Through. That was allowed as a conditional use, was initially approved. Drive throughs are not allowed in that B L, that business local zoning anymore. And then the other one we're creating is a duplex in a home that was created, a duplex got created at some point in time. And it's been proposed to single family, because everything else around it, single family, there's a duplex, I think it was a mother in law quarters, granny flat, whatever you want to call them, was created some time ago. The other nonconforming uses are basically egg based or they're egg today and they become nonconforming because we're giving them a zoning. And one of the other nonconforming uses is being requested for an amendment by the developer. So he's okay with the nonconforming being created because he's asked for something else. So it's helped that one as well. Oh, commission did entertain, thank you, Terrell, three amendments to the request. Their highlight on the map, Mooney, Landham and Frazier requests. The Mooney request is that along Winslow Road, staff had initially proposed B L, business local. The owners of that property, Mooney Angle, came in and requested to go to B C, just a little more intense commercial district. And the, and the commission concurred with their request and recommended approval. The second request was for the Landham, Landham and request, which is the old twenty four hour fitness Mac Express there on Tenth and Tenth and Barrington Parkway, thank you. Barrington Parkway. There was no, there was no objection to that request, they made that, that change as well. And then the final one was the Frazier amendment. He has a single family home, actually one of the nonconforming structures that were created. He's been working on plans for multifamily designation. And that request was granted as well because, sorry, it's north of Magnolia Lane there, similar condos, apartments in that area. And it just didn't make sense to have a single family home there anymore. So they recommend approval of all three amendments. And that's the map that's shown there and in your packet to kind of highlight those changes. So the commission has recommended approval subject to those three amendments.
Okay. At this time, the public hearing is open for any members of the public who are here to address council. Either in favor or in opposition. To this measure.
Me again.
Hi, please state your name and your address.
Sean Keating, two six six four Greenway Court, Marion, Iowa. So in favor of that, and it would be in regards to the amendment on one of those three properties. It's just, you know, consistency between other properties that are already in the development and adjacent. So I, I, as you can see, it, it's one of the own properties, and across the street is commercial as well. And so just making those properties consistent across that gives it more opportunities for future businesses to go in there and give a more variety to the developments, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? Have we received any comments outside this meeting? Okay, please note that for the public record. Anyone else to address council on this measure? Okay, we'll close the public hearing.
May I move to approve ordinance number twenty one dash twenty one approving an update to the official Marion zoning map for property located within Marion City Council Ward four, which includes precincts eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen. This will be the initial consideration.
Second?
Been moved and seconded to approve the initial consideration of ordinance number twenty one dash twenty one. Approving an update to the official Marion zoning map for property within Ward four, which includes precincts eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen. Discussion? Questions for Dave?
Question, your honor.
Great.
Yeah, just, Dave, can you clarify? I thought there were four nonconforming properties that would be created in this. And I think you said two tonight, is that correct?
Well, yeah, I'll, I'll correct myself a little bit there. Yeah, we, we're creating the Parlor City Drive Through. Because it was proven as a conditional use, drive throughs are no longer allowed in the B L district, that's nonconforming, number one. Number two, oh, I forgot, number two was on Albernett Road, it's that little single family house, it's on the S curve. That property was rezoned by the previous owner to commercial. So it's already nonconforming today, its nonconforming status remains, so I kind of left that one off. There was a single family home, the Frazier amendment. He's completely in favor of the, he's had a request to amend M R two, he, he wants to develop the property, so he had no objections to that nonconforming being created, he'd actually, his request makes it even more nonconforming than it is today. The one was, the other one was a duplex that was created at some point in time, I don't know when, in a single family neighborhood. We just couldn't zone it to a duplex because everything else around it is a single family. And that would be kind of that spot zoning where you're creating a zoning district for just one person. And then the final one was the miscellaneous land around that was mostly, it was, it's agricultural land. It's zoned residential because it's going to be in developed, but it's also still being farmed, so technically that egg land. Technically egg activities would be nonconforming. So the developers are all okay with that, there's an approved plomer plat and that, that zoning is consistent with what the developer has approved. He is, again, just farming that land until he's ready to develop that next piece. So it's a, yes, it's a nonconforming issue, but it's what they, it's what the developer's asking for as well, so.
So just, and this was really just for the record and, and tell me if I'm correct in this understanding or not. But for the physical structures that are nonconforming. They'll be able to continue to operate, but if they, if they suffer greater than or equal to fifty one percent damage to the physical structure, then that nonconforming use that is presently underway would not be permitted to continue.
Yes, and that's, and that's a dollar, a dollar amount, not a structure, not a structure.
Okay. Okay, I just want, I, I just think that's very important as a, as an expectation setting item as we go through these various adjustments to our overall zoning system.
And then on top of that, any, any structure that is damaged in excess of that fifty percent value to replace, they can appeal. They can appeal that to the zoning board of adjustment. It's not a variance. So there's a little bit of different review criteria for that level of approval. But if something should happen, another event, fire, act of God, there is, there is a path to, to to appeal that decision. And that would be up to the zoning board of adjustment ultimately.
Thanks for that reinforcement on how that will all work, thank you.
Go ahead, Randy.
Thank you, Dave, I got, I'm sorry, you had brought this up Tuesday and my insurance head is just exploding. Have we ever had anybody who has had an excessive of fifty percent loss to a property and the insurance policy doesn't pay out? And now that property is hung between a, a non-covered loss in an ordinance of law issue?
I'm not sure about the, the coverage, I'm not sure about their coverage on the, on their personal side, but I know on, we had the economy auto was damaged in excess of fifty percent of its value, the board denied their request, so they've moved, I don't know about their, their coverage side on their side, but yeah, so it's, it's sitting in limbo now.
Okay.
But again, they, I, I don't know about, I can't really speak to their, how their coverage works in terms of their insurance.
No, and I was just curious, because I, commercial or residential property is only going to have a certain value placed to it. But because their values would exceed fifty one percent of value, they could be put in, I, I just think it's something they, you know, owner beware, because hypothetically, you have a hundred thousand dollar structure, commercial or residential suffers fifty one thousand dollars worth of damage. And you've got forty nine thousand dollars of unclaimed claim on an insurance policy, which therefore puts the owner at a complete loss and could be upside down on property, which puts them into a, another position with that same said property.
And, oh, I was gonna say. We're, we're, the, the nice thing about is this, I mean, yeah, there are some nonconformities being created, but with, with the zoning we have in place, there's a lot more nonconforming structures, I mean, there's probably, I'm going to say a thousand, ballpark that today, just because they're old, it's old, old Marion, a thousand homes built in old Marion. I'm going to say none of them meet today's setbacks. The new regulations and the new map will actually help, I can't tell you how many, but it'll help a lot of them, providing, providing some of that setback relief and those traditional, but a traditional zoning in the, in the core of Marion. I think a lot of, I think a lot of structures are going to find more relief with the new, with the new regulations that have been adopted and the new map, they're going to have more relief than they have today under our current regulations. So, I mean, this is helping a lot of, this is, this is definitely helping more property owners than it is affecting, I think. When we only have, you know, two that are, are not being requested to actually happen, so.
No, and I appreciate that.
I think we're going in the right direction.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, and I also bring it up, the only reason, I bring it up is because it's, you know, the Dratcho paid, played a huge role in this where there's a lot of homes due to ordinance in law that didn't get coverages done because they were required. So homes that had fuse panels had to be brought up to breaker panels. Hardwired smoke alarms that weren't previous to the Dratcho were now required. There's, you know, we all as carriers experienced anywhere between four and fifteen thousand dollars worth of upgrades to homes that were required to be done by ordinance in law that weren't covered by the policies. And so I, for the, for the general public's education, it's, you know, I encourage people to really read these policies and understand them, and this is a perfect time to have brought that up, and I appreciate that, especially when we're talking about fifty one percent of loss in a nonconforming, so that, that plays a huge, huge role in their business plan. Thank you.
Any other comments? Tom, you have a comment?
I'd say that to, to that point, one of the, probably, one of the most written letters out of our department is, is to banks to identify that nonconforming structure process. And so it's, it's a, a lot of cities actually charge for that letter because it helps, it holds a little bit of weight, I'm sure the mayor knows in an abstract how that gets written and, and some of those things gets kind of caught up in that as well. So it's a legal letter that we write, I don't know, Dave, how many do you write? A lot, so yeah, that, it, it gets made aware generally when, when a loan gets issued on a piece of property, so we.
Perfect, thank you.
We do a lot of. Any other questions or comments? Okay, vote, all those in favor of ordinance number twenty one dash twenty one? Is there an issue or, oh, okay. All those in favor of ordinance number twenty one dash twenty one? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved. The next item on the agenda is an update regarding our COVID response. Is that from the acting city manager or interim city manager?
Either one, you pick. It's been exciting week.
Okay.
So I just wanted to give a brief update, I'm sure the council's well aware that we've had an uptick in COVID across the country and, and including, and specifically in Lynn County and the metro area. Most of us have read the newspapers and listens to the press releases and know there's a lot of changes, but I just wanted to point out a couple of statistics and, and just give a brief update on what we're doing here at the city relative to the uptick. You know, going back four weeks, starting July eleventh, there were forty one cases in Lynn County. The next week, starting July eighteenth, jumped to eighty nine cases, the twenty fifth, it went to a hundred and sixty eight cases. And the last statistic I have is a running seven days, the last seven days, there's two hundred and twenty nine cases. So we're seeing a, a significant increase in the, in the infection rate. On average, right now, we're about thirty three cases per day are being identified, which is a three hundred and nine increase, a three hundred and nine percent increase from fourteen days ago. So the, the curve is definitely pushing up. And we're starting to see a lot of responses from the metro areas. Obviously Cedar Rapids, I think, was a, was a, a big push and in the press a few days ago, and they notified that they would be masking in city facilities and in all public buildings and asking anyone entering the buildings to also mask up. I've also heard that DuBois instituted this, this as a, as a mandate yesterday, late yesterday. And then also Iowa City, I think, has moved in that direction today. So, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of conversation in the community about that, about mandates. Here at the city, we've had a lot of conversations internally with staff. And, and, and at this point, I think out of an abundance of caution and in order to protect our employees and the general public, we're going to, we're going to start requesting that patrons entering the building wear a mask, starting on Monday. And those working in the buildings wear a mask when social distancing cannot occur, and which means primarily in the public areas. While this is not a mandate, I trust that the employees and the public will respect, respect this direction. Mask will be offered to those entering the building, as will sanitation stations, we're going to, going to go back to where you can sanitize in and out. These actions and the response we monitor over the next couple of weeks to determine further action is warranted. We'll also closely monitor infection rates of the area and determine if further steps need to be taken to protect the city staff and the citizens entering the buildings in the future. So, you know, that's just the direction, I wanted to update the council on how we were taking a peek at this, leadership met. And, and this is kind of the direction we're looking to proceed at this point. So you, you'll see some signage on the buildings, we're going to ask people to please wear a mask. And we're going to monitor that situation into the future and analyze it, see how many people are actually responding to that, that signage. And, and just take a look at it. We're currently getting, I'd say maybe fifteen to twenty people from the public in the city hall a day. So we don't, we don't have a lot of folks entering the building on a daily basis anyway. But we'll continue to take a peek at that. We would ask that folks in the public, if they can use online services, we would certainly encourage that at this point. And like I said, we'll just continue to monitor the situation and, and see where this takes us, so. If you have any questions on that, it'd be happy to answer.
Any questions for Tom? Go ahead, Grant.
So Tom, based on input from other governmental entities and considerations that you maybe have picked up on, does, does any of this connotate a change with how we conduct our city council meetings?
So thankfully, we have two weeks before the next city council meeting. So we're going to, we're going to take a peek at, at how this goes. I, we do have a number of meetings next week, which we're going to encourage folks to wear masks at those meetings and, and the public that attends them to also wear a mask. And when at their, like, if we were all sitting in the meeting now, we'd all have a mask on, if you want to speak, you'd take your mask off to speak. And that's, I think. And that's, I think, how we're going to operate our meetings next week, and we'll see how that goes.
Yep.
I'm sorry, did you say it would be just the city hall or all facilities?
All public.
All facilities, thank you.
Meeting city city facilities.
City facilities, I'm sorry, yes. City-owned properties.
Just a point of clarify. So this is good, right? I appreciate you all taking those measures, and I'll be happy to dig out my mask again. It's gonna get cold and it keeps me warm, so I'm okay with that. But just to, I I think, maybe remind folks that are listening. We are unable to require masking. Is that accurate at this point in time? We we can't, as I mean, as much as, right, we would like to say we want everybody to wear a mask. It seems to me, if I recall, right, the governor has not given us the opportunity to do that.
We can actually, at this point in time, we can still require that in our buildings. We could make a mandate. There are some disputes as to the correct interpretation of that new law, which I expect at some point in time will get some clarification handed down to us. But at this point in time, the the most common way to read it and my understanding in speaking with other municipal attorneys who have talked to the attorney general's office, we can require them in public facilities. But as Tom said, at this point in time, we're not gonna do a mandate here. And I I really expect within the next few weeks, we'll get some direction from above, one way or the other.
But in any event, the extent of what we can do is is require them in city facilities and public facilities. We can't require them in the city at large. I think that's what Colette was trying to clarify. And is that is that accurate?
That's correct. We can only require them on property that we own. We can't require other property owners to issue a mask mandate.
Right, yeah, that's accurate, right? Yeah, I mean, not too many months ago, we had a, right, there was discussion about some municipalities required a mask for everybody. And my understanding is we can't do that at this point.
Right.
And so I think that's an important distinction for our community to recognize that we don't, that's not an option for us to pursue at this point in time.
That's correct. And we also, at this point in time, with regard to the meetings and structures of meetings, we also at this time, if we are going to continue to do those in person, the public will be allowed to come in person for as long as we're meeting in person unless the governor issues another proclamation, which suspends the rules and allow us to state how many people can come in. But at this point in time, we cannot restrict the number.
Right, but we can ask people to wear a mask, which you this is what you're doing. Okay. Okay, anything else on that topic? All right. Thanks to the chief and Tom for going to the meeting yesterday with the county health department and the other municipalities to stay on top of these issues and where we're headed and appreciate your your leadership and guidance on it. And of course, our city attorney, who's very central to these decisions. Okay. All right, then we'll move on to the next item, which is a public forum that is set aside for comments from the public on any topic. Sir, this would be the time, this would be a time when you are welcome to please address the council. Thank you for your patience and waiting until the the appropriate time. And if you could, again, state your name and address and.
Chuck Smiley. Let's see, twenty seven thirty five Highlands Circle, Marion, Iowa, five two three oh two.
Thank you.
Sorry, when you called for a public comment, I thought you were moving to the end of your meeting.
It's okay.
Okay, so my comment is is general. My question is, do we have a long-term plan in this community to maintain the nice town that we have right now? I consider, from all the places I've lived, that that Marion is is a boom town. Seems to be growing like crazy. Lot of nice neighborhoods out at the edges and then the static in this area here in the middle of the town. And observing other towns around like Cedar Rapids and Waterloo, it seems like in that center part of the community, they're having a lot of problems with crime, drive-by shootings, murders, robberies, things like this.
In Marion?
No, not Marion. No, I Marion is immune to this for some reason right now, and it's probably the city council doing a good job. You know, keeping this place a good place to live. And I see other towns failing, like Cedar Rapids, where it seems like every day or two, there's a murder down there or something going on, drive-by shootings, this problem. And drive-by shootings are exceptionally objectionable because they often injure innocent citizens that are around. So looking at it another way, I think, like, there's five levels of government. There's federal, state, county, city, and the family. And I think that we need to make sure that we're enforcing that family because I think the family is what keeps the law and order in the situation. And if that breaks down, then you start getting into a lot of problems. And any one of those levels of government can affect down to the city and 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 family level and can actually destroy a town like I've seen with my hometown. So anyway, I brought question errors.
Would you mind giving one to the city clerk also? Yeah, thank you. Sir, when you're speaking, you have to speak in the microphone because this meeting is recorded and for the public record, we need to have you speak in the microphone. Thank you.
Where was I? So a lot of these comments affect law and order. And I think the the solution to this problem is educational so that we're developing people that have a career that is productive and is law-abiding. And so if if the educational system fails, then we have a lot of citizens that don't have a good background, that can get a good job, that can support a strong industry in the town. And I see I see the federal government is not helping us out. They're spending too much money, they're getting in trouble with that, they've got inflation going, which is affecting us. The state government, I think, is doing fine. The the city government, I think, has got a good plan, and we need to support that family group at the bottom that keeps the society functioning correctly. So, yeah, I'd like to see more of a plan on how the city proposes to strengthen the family, strengthen the inner city, and make make Marion last or other cities have collapsed.
Any questions? Appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Anyone else to address council?
You already approved me, but I just wanted to say something else. Stephanie Phillips, sixty two forty North Gateway, Marion. I just wanted to thank you guys, and I did, we don't mean to be difficult because I know there was a lot of discussion about it. We didn't mean to be difficult, but for us, it's two businesses that would be required to do it. And that was our only point is I agree with everything that's been said, that there's just a plan in place that then we can, because our first business did have a deferral. And so then, through the different things I had read of from our general contractor back and forth with the city, it was then being suggested that deferral be taken away as well. So that was the one that really threw us for a loop because then that business that has already suffered a loss this year would have been asked to do so too. So that's all that we were asking for. We are totally on board with whatever you guys decide a year from now, next spring, next summer, whatever it is. Just that that's all we were asking for is a deferral to get all of our finances at both facilities back on track. So we didn't need to be difficult or suggest that we were being rebellious towards the sidewalks. That is all we were asking for. So I just wanted to tell you thank you, and whenever you tell us it's time, we will now prepare a budget for that going forward. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Your honor?
Yes, Tom. Yes, I I think in in light of Mr. Smiley's comments, I do think it's important to note that we do have a the city does have a comprehensive plan that does lay out goals and strategies to address not only our newer developments but our interior developments. I'll have somebody from the planning department reach out and have a conversation with Mr. Smiley and kind of enlighten him on things that we've got in place and and just direction of the city is looking to go and kind of how we ensure that some of those things don't happen into the future.
Good. That's a great idea, and I'm sure Mr. Smiley will look forward to hearing from from someone from your department. Any other comments? Okay, well, do counsel comments, and then we'll move on to our closed session this evening.
Thank you, your honor. I, as I was getting ready for my recycle day tomorrow, I was just reviewing past copies of our Cedar Rapids Gazette, and I do want to, as a former coach at Lynn Mar, albeit long ago in a galaxy very far away, I have to publicly express congratulations to the Marion baseball team and all of the all of the seniors that were part of that great success and the coaching staff. Now, while that challenges me as a former Lynn Mar coach, I am absolutely compelled to recognize this publicly, so congratulations. However, I do have a minor structural comment about this edition of the Gazette. Underneath is cyclones bulking up. The good thing is it's in a larger font, but I do think maybe it could have been put at the top of the page. Thank you.
Who let this guy on council, right? Second, the Marion baseball team will take that all day long. So thank you, Mr. Lyon, for, right? And secondly, I just have to comment, Smiley is a great last name. Like, right, isn't that the best last name, Mr. Smiley? So that's all I've got to say.
Okay, thank you. I have to agree. Go ahead.
Mike, I also wanted to echo congratulations to the Marion Indians, the final Marion Indians team and their their state championship. That's all.
That brings me to me. I would like to thank everybody who came out to Thomas Park. I was able to attend with the fine departments that we had. Just wanted to express appreciation to all the staff, city employees, career, as well as all of our volunteers that participated. If I forget a department, I apologize. I know also, too, we had Lynn County Sheriff's Department was out there showing some of their equipment off. So sounds like we had a good turnout. Given our current situation, people were excited about coming out and seeing some of that stuff and gives us a chance to show off some of that equipment. So just wanted to share a big thank you to everybody that took the time to go out there. So thank you. That's all I have.
Thanks, Randy. Okay, for my part, again, congratulations to the members of the fire department on their promotions and appointments that we celebrated this evening. It's it's nice to be able to do these do these things again and to share those moments with with our staff. So thanks, chief, for doing that. And we have the observance of the Dratcho one-year anniversary coming up on the tenth. There are a number of activities planned for that day. I encourage everyone to participate and be part of the events commemorating the Dratcho. It was a an event that we want to remember and never have repeated. But we should remember it. We should be grateful for our wonderful city staff and our city leaders and all the volunteers from the community who all pulled together and really showed the world who we are as a community and how it should be done. And I'm very grateful for that and very proud of how our town responded to that terrible event. And the in the year since, everything that has happened to help Marion get back on track. And we really with with coming on top of a pandemic, you know, that that could have been a devastating event, but we really didn't lose a lot of momentum, and we were we were quickly regaining all that momentum. Everywhere we look, all around us, we see progress, we see great projects going on. And just across the street, we see amazing progress that is going to transform this entire area of our town and really add new life to it. And coming up tomorrow and next week, we have two great ribbon cuttings that we've been waiting for for a decade or more. Sixth Avenue is finally going to open, so please join us tomorrow at nine thirty for that. And that'll be a big celebration, you know, that I I remember it's probably two thousand eight or something like that. When we had the very first discussion, I was on the Brownfields Committee of Metco, and we had the very first discussion with the Brown family about relocating Marin Iron, the possibility of that. And you look at how much has been accomplished since that and the inception of the Central Corridor Project. And it's a seventeen-plus-million-dollar project. And when we purchased the railroad right-of-way, the first iteration of of this was a linear park. That was the first idea by one of the consultants was make six instead of Sixth Avenue, make the railroad right-of-way a linear park. And then it eventually evolved into what we what we have now. And I think it's a great project that will allow us to manage traffic through our central business district. It's it's a very beautiful street, and it's going to be a big celebration tomorrow when we finally cut the ribbon on the at the roundabout on the East End. And then, of course, next week is the fire station. And I'm sorry, I'm not going to be around for that, but I will be with you in spirit. And that's a very exciting ribbon cutting also that we have been looking forward to working on and anticipating for many years to have our third fire station. And what a beautiful facility that is. This really is another showpiece and another landmark for our city and another point of pride. You look at all these projects that are coming online recently, each one of them is a point of pride, you know, for for our city. And we're really, I think, putting into into action our words of we reach higher and and expect more of ourselves and expect more for our community and for the residents. And it really shows in everything that that we're doing lately. And keep up the great work, everyone. It's it's wonderful for our city, and it really helps to make us a standout community. So thank you. And with that, the meeting is a, no, the meeting is not adjourned. We have a closed session.
Thank you, your honor. I move to adjourn to closed session regarding litigation as permitted under section two one point five one C of the Iowa Code.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn to closed session regarding litigation as permitted under the Iowa Code. We'll take the legal counsel's opinion, please.
Thank you, your honor. I have reviewed the proposed subject matter for the closed session and find the same to be appropriate under Iowa Code section twenty one point five one C.
Okay, any discussion before we vote? Take the roll call, please.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Ms. Atkins?
Yes.
Mayor Abou Asli?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Mr. Sterned?
Yes.
Okay, we are now adjourned to closed session. We'll return to open session upon, uh, completion. Thank you, everyone, for joining us.